Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Floranoi?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? We have about every committee reporting, so any additional committee reports. We'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the April 13 council meeting. You have your March finance report. We have a resolution for employment at Park and Rec Department for lifeguards. Approval of liquor licenses for Hy-Vee. Claims approval on the amount of $607,441.51. And entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion?
Question. The pool invoice is part of the claims. Is that right?
Correct. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I pulled it out just so it stood out to the council. It's a large claim of $357,000. I wanted to draw attention to it separately.
Thank you.
Great. And also, just, Mike, you might mention how we're working with our CAT grant reimbursements on expenses as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff have been briefed on CAT grant reimbursement procedures, and we do have a process in play, and we are starting to submit for reimbursement on that $1 million CAT grant. So we'll see the revenue stream coming in. It'll trickle in as the project continues to move along.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding our consent agenda? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Floranoi?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're a little over two months out from our Jefferson County Fair and Parade, so if someone is with us this evening representing Jefferson County Fair...
How are you folks?
Good evening.
It's not time here again, so... The fair parade will be, if you approve it.
Of course.
June 23rd.
Okay.
That's on a Tuesday.
June 23rd, and your parade route will be?
Up Broadway, North Island Main, and back down Old Griggs.
Okay, very good.
Same as it has always been.
Yep, exactly.
No big surprises.
Okay.
I talked, I didn't talk to the chief, but I talked, I think, one of your lieutenants or something.
Yeah, I think they did give me the information, sir. Thank you. Okay, very good. Well, if I approve.
And I'm stepping down after this year, so...
Well...
I got about 32 years out there, so my replacement will be Richard Alexander next year for...
Good, nice to see you. We'll look forward to your visit to the council next year, and congratulations on all your good work over 32 years.
Yeah, it's time.
We obviously appreciate it.
It's time, so...
Great. All right, well, with the chief's blessings on the parade route and the great tradition of the parade that represents, we have a motion by Hammers to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. We have a report from our Beautification Commission with their annual report.
Good evening.
Nancy Horace, and this is Sue Gale.
Hi.
Everybody knows Sue. Okay, and I apologize, this is a little late, but when I talked with the mayor about it, he thought it was best to wait till maybe after Michael got on board, so here we are. Can you hear? Okay. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city council for its support, for the support you've given the Beautification Commission from this past year, because without the council's support of our budget and our activities, we wouldn't be, this wouldn't be possible. So some of the activities from 2014 include planning, of course, the flowers and seasonal decorations in the concrete pots and in the window boxes in the downtown area for all of the seasons. Those are maintained every year by volunteers. Those are not, the city does not take care of those. And pumpkins were donated by Hy-Vee. Winter Greenery was done again by Oakwood Nursery, and of course, everything else comes out of our budget. We again cooperated with the Fairfield Area Chamber of Commerce to have the 36 hanging baskets downtown, and donations do usually cover the cost of those. However, we pick up any funding shortfall, or if there's things that need to be done, like replacing liners and stuff, then that also comes out of our budget. We had weeding and mulching done at the Alliance site, the railroad overpass, and at the Fairfield Little League Park, and we've done that the last couple of years. We did it the year that Ragbride came through, and I don't know if anybody recalls seeing that, but it was really a nice, it was a really nice thing, so we did it again last year. In June, we held our sixth annual, or no, eighth annual Adopt a Home event with the help of volunteers from Cambridge Investment, and 15 gallons of paint provided from a grant from Keep Iowa Beautiful and Diamond Vogel Paints. We were able to paint the backside of another building facing Heritage Courtyard. The work there also include additional cleanup of the area. And now Sue is going to hand out some, she's my Vanna White for the night. So she's going to hand out some before and after pictures, so if you happen to be on the council a couple of years ago, we, in our presentation, we gave you the first picture that she's going to hand you, which was the, basically just that parking lot that the city owns on that corner of Heritage Courtyard. And it was just really something that we felt was an eyesore, and we wanted to really see some improvement. And so our goal was to green it up and clean it up. And so we're now going to, Sue's passing out the pictures that show some of the things that we had done in that area, and, you know, it's one of those things that if you don't ever have any need to drive through it, you may not give that much attention to it, you know, it's not on your path. But I'd like to just point out, if you would, in the after picture, if you would look on the right side of the page that...
Upper right?
Yeah, yeah, the one that says April 2015, up in the top right corner, that is what the parking area looks like now with the help of the concrete work that we had the city help us with. And then, of course, we received, you know, funding to have the bollards and the plants. And so if you compare that with the barrels that had the, the posts, the signposts in them and what that looked, we feel like that was really a significant improvement. And then some of the other things, I would have liked to have had a before picture of this other area. You can see on the, again, in the after picture, on the left, bottom left corner of the page, there's a row of columnar buckthorn. And again, this is on the 2015, April 2015 page, bottom left. And again, that area was just like a concrete curbing that was filled in with concrete, and it just allowed weeds and things to grow in it. And again, we just had, you know, the city guys helped us, and they cleared that out. We put the dirt in, and now we have these very happy columnar buckthorn that are growing up there and really helping to bring things up. Same thing then in the middle parkway of the parking area. You can see the picture on the right side of the tree guards, okay, where we had, again, the city workers helped cut the concrete so that we could plant those trees in that area also. So hopefully, you will agree that that was a worthwhile project, and we're just about done with it. There are a few more things, wink, wink, Michael, we'll maybe talk to you about. You already know what some of them are. We've already had some conversations, and it's pretty minor stuff, but anyway, so any questions about that particular thing?
Looks very nice.
Okay, thank you.
This is great. You mentioned also that, you know, really great cooperation from all the property owners there as well.
Oh, yeah.
And the volunteers over the years that have been involved.
Yeah, definitely, because this has been, you know, this has been a staged, it's been in phases, okay, that we have, yes, started with, we actually, the Elks was the very first building that we chose. It was the biggest one, and it was a nonprofit. We felt like that was a really good place to start, and they were thrilled to have that done, and then basically, you know, all the way down the row. And, you know, some of them were a little bit less enthused at first, but you know what? They love it now, and they're thrilled, you know, with how it's all, what's all looking. So it looks like somebody cares, and that's what we wanted, wanted to look like.
Well, it was great vision, because you don't know where to start when you look at what that looked like before, so.
Yeah, and it would look even better if there were a few less poles and so forth in that area. So anyway, again, that's just another thing we can maybe work on down the road. So anyway, okay. Let's see. Okay, then, later in June, Vanna has another handout for you. Okay, later in June, we had a cleanup event for the downtown area, and we called this our 175 Pair of Hands for the 175th Birthday. Now, this was not one of our more successful endeavors, I'm afraid to say. In fact, it was very, very poorly attended, so we're not doing it, you know, we're not doing it again this year. But we still felt like it was a great opportunity to create awareness with the citizens of Fairfield. And you can see from the, the second page, which was the flyer that we took around and we distributed, you know, to property owners and everybody around the square. You know, we were just really trying to enforce, reinforce some of the things that people can do every day to make downtown Fairfield look better. So even though, again, it wasn't that successful in terms of how many people showed up for it, it was still, you know, a worthwhile thing to do, I think. We also received grant money from the Fairfield Cultural Alliance for the East Fairfield Entrance Sign, and so in the fall, we pooled their money with a little bit of ours, and we held a cleanup event there. We weeded and trimmed, we planted some trees and shrubs out there. There's a red bud tree now, which wasn't there before. Everything made it through the winter happily. And anyway, the other thing, at Christmas season, we had a star in the east. How many people happened to notice the star in the east as they came into Fairfield?
Yes.
Okay. That was designed by our very own Lou Bolster, and then we also added lights to the tree at the south entrance as you came into town. And again, I don't know how many people, you know, come in that way, but if you missed it this year, they'll be out there again next year. And we thought that Lou's was in particular very nice, because it was a very kind of artistic, but very tastefully done to add some holiday spirit to the entrance. Also in the fall, we replaced shrubs in eight of the nodes around the square. We got, again, money, some money from the Greater Jefferson County Foundation and added, you know, some of ours to, with it. I can't remember now the exact number of plants, and I know right now, when you look, you probably can't believe that we did that, because they still look kind of sparse, but things are still growing and getting bigger. A lot of the perennials and stuff are kind of late, you know, coming up. But we will continue to work with Pam to try to, you know, continue to get some, some more grants. You know, the droughts that we've had, you know, have really been hard on things, and just not really much you can do about that, so just try to put back drought tolerant plants. So, okay. This year, in addition to continuing our usual projects, we hope to also create more awareness about enlisting the help of businesses and building owners to help do their part. And we actually did work with Scott Vaughn, and we prepared a letter. I know that Ed saw it. I'm not sure if anybody else has, but...
Mike saw it as well.
Okay, Michael saw it. So Vanna's handing that out, and you don't need to read it now, but basically, this is the letter that we came up with, and it was signed by both Scott and myself, and we mailed or hand-delivered 100 of these to, again, you know, owners around the square and like a block each direction. And hopefully, we'll see, you know, some benefit from that. Again, trying to, trying to educate, you know, the, you know, people downtown that, you know, that there are things that, you know, that they can do to be helpful, okay? We also, as I mentioned before, you know, have been working hand in hand with Pam and trying to, you know, not only replace those plants, but we want to try to maintain what we've got. So we will be having, we're going to be doing a test with some irrigation system on the east side in the nodes that are on the inside of the square, because there is watering system already inside, and so that way, we, those would be able to be watered at the same time that other watering gets done in Central Park, and that will be kind of like an insurance policy to keep those plants healthy and living, and then not having to replace them all the time. And that will be part of this year's. And the, in May, oh, let's see, yes, okay, number five. All right, this is very fun stuff. Okay, coming right up, we will be hanging 36 new summer banners designed by our local artist, Susan Kessel, and you're the first to get to see this, other than the commission, of course. But these are in the works, and they should be coming in May, and they will be alternated with the hand-painted gold Celebrate Fairfield banners. So these will be replacing the other ones that had gotten, the other cultural banner ones, and they, we did an inventory of those, and it was a really surprising, we thought that the gold ones were the ones that were not going to be in very good shape, and that those are the ones we should replace, but it turned out the cultural banner ones were the ones that were in worse shape, because they're only one piece of fabric, and they had a lot of ripping going across the bottom of them. But anyway, so I think that'll be a nice, fresh look, and it's some different colors. You know, they still have to relate back to the gold ones, so we can't go completely away. You know, we, somebody wanted purple, can work that in, but, sorry, Sue. Anyway, anyway, so those, those will be coming up soon. We look to 2015 to be the year of getting back to the basics, taking care of what we've got, including things like, you know, maybe having non-functional utility poles removed, maybe seeing maybe street, or the streetlights painted, things like that. You know, things that can really, you know, if you're just taking care of what you've got, can really make, you know, a big difference. So we look forward to working with the council. We look forward to working with all of Fairfield citizens to beautify Fairfield, whether it's through people just mowing their yards, painting their houses, whether it's joining the new facade program, helping update assigned ornaments, or helping to understand the 20 ingredients to an outstanding downtown. So we're looking forward to 2015. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your report. Any questions, Counsel?
Very good.
Good, we are very impressed, and I'll just...
These are just summaries of what we've established.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, these, this is like a written-up report of what I've just, you know, said to you, so you can refer back to that if you'd like.
Okay. Vanna tonight was played by Sue Gale, by the way.
Yes, thank you.
I'll just piggyback on your comments, Nancy, that this year, I think, will be significant in terms of focus in the downtown as well with the finishing of the design for the facade project, but also with what Terry Baker is going to present to us a little bit later, with the outstanding, with the presentation of the outstanding ingredients of the downtown, how we apply those tonight, what the council's going to be looking at, our public policy issues surrounding downtown, cleanliness, public restrooms, a number of different elements like that. And then the community assessment process that's going to be going on, we're going to be getting a report and feedback about what kind of impression we make objectively from outsiders and where we can focus and strengthen. So thanks for all of your work getting us thus far, and we look forward to a good year this year.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Counsel, we'll move to our resolutions and action items, and the first is engineering agreement with French Rendicure for our Third Street reconstruction. Melanie, if you'll come up and take any questions, give us a brief overview.
This project originally started off as overlay of Iowa and Third Street, but then when the bids came in for the sewer portion of Third Street, we saw that the removal of the pavement, pavement price was a little bit high, and we thought maybe we could take advantage of that. And thus, the department heads and Mike and I talked, and we opted to reconstruct Third Street from Iowa to Harrison. A majority of that section of street is going to get the sewer replaced underneath it. The water main, there was a few water main issues that were taken care of last fall. So again, another street where we hope to have the utilities done, and now a new street going over it. So this is for the design of Third Street, as well as the engineering during construction. The design is a lump sum total of $16,500, with the engineering during construction being an hourly contract with a budget of $18,000. We hope to get this put on file in June so that it could start shortly after the fiscal year begins.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Counsel, you also have the listing of opinion of probable cost for the, for the total project as well. Any questions for Melanie? Not entertain a motion to approve the engineering agreement with French Rendicure?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Floranoi?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, thanks, Mel. Next, Counsel, we will be setting a hearing for the sale of the MRC building in the industrial park that's at 102 South 23rd Street. We have a May 6th bid opening, so we will have bids to consider and be presented that night. Hopefully, we've got something worthy of approving, but we'll set a hearing for May 6th for, I'm sorry, May 11th, our first council meeting at 7:00 PM.
Need to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, Counsel, we also have a date to set for a public hearing on the proposed Libertyville Road Sewer Expansion Project. This is essentially in compliance with our eminent domain process, so we would set a public hearing to hear any concerns along those lines. Entertain a motion to set June 3rd for a public hearing.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next two items, Counsel, I'll ask Mike to just give us a brief background on.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you use an engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey, Joy and I have been working closely with Travis, Travis Squires with the Piper Jaffrey firm, and we feel the market is right now for the refinancing of our 2006 general obligation bond, as well as our 2013 bond anticipation note. So this letter of engagement would, basically, it's standard language that would allow Piper Jaffrey to begin the underwriting process for the refinance of our two bonds that we have outstanding of approximately $6.25 million on the 2006 general obligation and $1.9 million on the 2013 bond anticipation.
Thanks. So entertain a motion then to approve the letter of engagement with Piper Jaffrey?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike, this next approval.
Of the, so the amendment for dissemination agreement with Piper Jaffrey, we, we contract with Piper Jaffrey to handle all of our bond compliance regulatory issues, and so we're amending the dissemination agreement to add the 2015 general obligation bond and the 2015 bond anticipation. This will allow them to keep us on compliance with the federal regulations required with municipal bonding.
2015, by means, the one we just talked about?
The one that, you're right, so we'll refinance the 2006 and the 2013 and the 2015.
Move for approval. Okay. Moved by Revulinski?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And then finally, we'll be setting a, are we, this is actually a public hearing set for?
It's called Fix a Date.
Right. Actually, it's the date of Fix a Date, so we're just calling, yeah.
Yeah.
So this will be on our agenda from May 11th to call for a public hearing, and this, are we, just Joy and Mike, are we scheduled to try and close this before the end of the fiscal year? Is that our objective, or?
We would like to close, Mayor, once we get the, the sale of Logan Apartments.
Right.
Once that closing happens, then we can fast-track the closing of these bonds.
Right.
And obviously, these things are sensitive. We watch the market, and when the market's correct, that's when we, we get the best interest rate, so we kind of watch and reflect a little bit. We'd like to close Logan first.
Right. You know, on that note, I could wait for the city attorney report, but John Marcy, would you mind updating the council on, on Logan Apartments' sale?
Sure.
So Counsel, we'll be...
I didn't bring anything with me. We have submitted...
Anecdotal.
We've been working closely with the attorney for the buyer, and the buyer himself is down here about every third day. We've submitted around 27 documents to HUD since February 20th. We were put in contact with the right person at HUD the third week of February, after some back and forth, after we had your authority to go ahead with this in late January. What we're running into is, we did get shuffled from a few desks inside the Des Moines HUD office. The person up there that is officially going to sign off on the assignment of rents to let the new buyer take over our contract is through about 20 of our documents. We have amended several documents two or three times. I don't know any other way to characterize this but red tape. She's a pleasant enough sort, but we're trying to urge this to close yet this month. Mr. Jimenez, right now, is anticipating probably we won't close until May 5th. That's a date that the lady at HUD has told us is most likely for her sign off with what we've got on her table, but we've been explaining to her it's important to our city that we have this accomplished within this fiscal year, because of some things in our budget this fiscal year and several things in our budget next fiscal year. We would like to have the capital transfer and transaction done, yet we originally talked about that as a March, end of March effort. We've been talking about it all this month as an end of April effort. We've had different people calling into HUD to encourage them to please nudge this along another notch as far as the paperwork. So right now, I think we're in pretty good shape on at least probably three-fourths of the information that's in, but the new buyer is a no previous experience buyer, which has caused HUD to out of caution back up and require some additional information in some areas. Our buyer looks great on the HUD forms as far as the information he sends into them, so within 24 hours, anytime they ask for anything additional, he's got the information, and it's off to them. And I can tell you, we'll probably have a book about that, I think, by the time we get done with all the documentation, just to have them sign a two-page document called an Assignment and Assumption related to this rent contract that we have every 12 months for our subsidized Section 8 housing over there. So we're that far along. I'm confident, or I'm very, very hopeful that we'll have this closed probably in the next two weeks.
Great, thank you, John. Appreciate that. And Counsel, we're, we're hoping that that takes place, as John mentioned, for the cash transfer before we submit anything to rating agencies going forward about our new bond issues, so we're, we want to be sure that that's all taken care of. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We don't, okay, so motion to approve the, setting the date.
To approve.
Okay, moved by Hammers, second by?
Revulinski.
Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Yes?
One more item, Mayor, if I may add. This refinance is expected to save the city approximately $150,000 to $175,000, depending on the actual rate that we get locked in. So, some substantial savings for the city.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, counsel, we have our third and final reading for the no parking on City Rightway along the east and west sides of Highway 1. This is public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone who wishes to comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask what the counsel wishes to do. Third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamas.
To approve.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion approved. We have second reading for our ordinance amending the requirements for abandoning private sewer systems upon connection to the city system. This is also public hearing. We'll open that at this time and ask if there's any comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy to approve from the second to the third reading. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And we have the second reading for our fee rate increase for rental housing. Open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone who wishes to comment on the proposed fee increases. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve from the second and third reading.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamas, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And then, counsel, we will have our first reading for a simple and minor subdivisions ordinance. I'll ask Scott Vaughn to come up and give us a report on that. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. So with this minor and simple subdivisions, we're just adding an ordinance that basically we didn't have before. We really had nothing on the books. And we've been asked here previously a few times to split some lots in all we're doing. I think you guys could pull up, it was given to you, if you wanted to read it. We're just ensuring that we have frontage, if this takes place, of at least 40 feet. We want to make sure we have access for emergency vehicles. We're requiring that there's no liens or anything against the properties, surveys and such. So, pretty straightforward. We went with some other cities, Washington, Carroll, and we even took some wording out of the Jefferson County Supervisors or Jefferson County subdivisionaries. And then, we had John write up the ordinance for us, so.
Have you had any recent examples of having to subdivide in this way, Scott?
I think we've got one coming up in one of our upcoming meetings.
So our B Street, the Board of Adjustment approved a subdivide, or is considering a subdivide on North B Street, that this could affect.
Okay.
Where there would not be access to the rear lot, there's no public frontage access to that subdivision. And so, this could affect things if the ordinance, if the subdivision does not happen prior to the ordinance being in place.
We tabled that, didn't we, until the next meeting?
Right. The homeowner or the property owner has not made a decision on that subdivision.
Okay.
This has went before planning and zoning, and they have approved it. So, that's why we're coming to you with it, with the first reading.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Any questions, counsel, for Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
So, what have we done so far without this ordinance? I mean, how do we treat these kind of things? We just eyeball it and?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, like I said, there really wasn't a whole lot that we, you know, had on the books that we could do. And this is just, you know, we're not trying to restrict people from doing it, but we just want to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row, that, you know, we don't end up in trouble later on.
And so, I'm sorry, can you review again, like, the main things? It's not like jumping out at me in this ordinance.
If somebody has a parcel...
Forty foot of frontage.
Yep. So, we don't want somebody with a house out front to divide that and then have a house in the back that we can't get to for emergency with an ambulance or emergency, you know, fire truck. We want to be able to make sure that there's frontage for both of those.
Now, if someone had like alley, would that count or not?
This ordinance has said that an alley would not count as a public frontage, as 40 foot of public frontage street.
And so, emergency vehicles can't go in the alley, or it's more difficult?
We don't usually go in the alley unless absolutely, unless fire-wise. I can't speak for ambulance and police, but.
Okay, so it's a 40-foot frontage. I mean, it's a big ordinance. I mean, again, it's not jumping out at me what's unique about this. So, it's the frontage, and maybe you just go through it and point it out.
The main thing, the main thing we looked at was we tried to take into consideration the safety concerns, the protection of equality and rights of zoning lots, property owners' stress on infrastructure, and for the future direction that we'll be going as a city with zoning.
How many properties exist now that don't have any frontage?
I don't know without having the numbers in front of me.
They exist though, right, in the city?
Yeah.
So you have trouble getting to those if there's a fire or an emergency?
We would, yeah, if we came across one of those. I can't tell you where they're at.
Right, right. I understand that. But they exist, and it's a problem.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Scott. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any public comment, we'll close the public hearing and ask what is the wish of the counsel?
Move from the first to the second reading.
Second. Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy to move from the first to the second reading. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, in my report, just call your attention to the fact that the CDBG grant that we applied for for our housing rehabilitation was declined. We were, it sounds to me from the letter that it was a very competitive process. Adam Plegge felt that some of our scores were probably high in a number of areas, and it was a little surprising. But I'm not sure, this comes from the same area where we've received several recent grants. It may be that Fairfield was just considered a little bit lower because of some recent successes we've had there. We are invited to call Barb Harvey at the Iowa Economic Development Authority, which I will do to find out a little bit more, but we will not. So, that will throw the portion that we had pledged towards that grant of about $20,000 back into this year's local option sales tax, which Ways and Means might want to consider before the fiscal year. We will be holding, very excited about holding our strategic planning sessions coming.
It's coming out in next year.
What's that? Well, for next year, but budgeting, rebudgeting for next year. Yeah.
Which... Burn a hole in our pocket.
What's that?
It doesn't have to burn a hole in our pocket. I mean, we don't have to, like, plan on spending it right now, do we?
No, no, it's totally up to you. But, you know, I think part of the rationale that we told a number of the people who had asked for, we generally budget that full 12.5%. That's, so if that's a direction you'd like to go, that will be available. So anyway, very excited about our upcoming strategic planning sessions in the month of May for the council. We'll get started on May 13th with a visioning session to give an overall statement to the priorities of our council and our government going forward. And then, we'll follow that up on May 27th with a second meeting for goal setting. Appreciate Mike Harmon bringing this to my attention as an opportunity. And I think it's great that we can do this with Mike now that he's had a couple of months under his belt and we can tie it to the beginning of our next fiscal year. And we're looking forward to that. We'll move to our committee and board reports. Jefferson County Service Agency.
So just a reminder, that agency is made up of two county supervisors, two city council members, and a fifth member who's a member of the public. And it's mostly to manage the Jefferson County Law Center, which is owned by the county, but at least half of it's leased by the city. But there are a couple of other things that we have 28E agreements with the county. One is the recycling center that Connolly manages, the corner of Ninth and Gear. The contract for that went expired in August of last year, but no one really noticed. So, we began discussing the arrangement. It was that the city was paying 60% of that cost annually, and the county was paying 40%. Mike and I discussed it and did a little research on what type of income we have in our refuse fund to cover that. The only income we have that specifically goes to covering that is a $3 monthly fee for the business utility accounts on the city utility. And it's not currently enough to pay that 60%. The supervisors were verbally at least open to maybe switching the percentage because now we have single-stream recycling here in Fairfield. That means fewer people should need to use that center, at least within the city. So, we're meeting again on June 15th. In the meantime, the Environment Committee will discuss it, crunch some numbers, maybe put together a proposal. One of the supervisors will speak to the managers, the Connolly brothers, and find out kind of an informal survey of who uses it. Because really, it's the people who are in the unincorporated county who don't get curbside recycling, who need it the most. And so, we're thinking maybe to switch that percentage to the counties paying the majority. So, after our next Environment Committee, I'll have a proposal for the council. A couple of other little things. We talked about housekeeping, literally, just the new housekeeper. And then, there was this issue of this tower that is out on Walton Road that MediaCom wants to donate to the county. It would allow them to send out, Chief helped me out, all the different services that are currently using that.
Yes, sir. So it's the... Ambulance, fire, law enforcement, all emergency services, also county roads is also on there.
Yeah, so currently, they're using the tower on the courthouse lawn, but it's not in an ideal location, and there are dead spots throughout the county. So they're very keen on getting this new tower. The problem is, it's on city land. So, we didn't want to get into a complicated situation where MediaCom had to give it to the city, and then the city had to lease it back to the county. So, we basically put our lawyer, our city attorney, in touch with their county attorney and let them hash it out. But some, find some way that they can just take ownership of the tower and manage it themselves.
Will this mean that the tower at the county will come down? And the courthouse will come down?
Yes, sir. Come down, or maybe get reduced in height? I'm not sure exactly.
There's also some, some safety concerns with, we discussed in the meeting, our repair person that goes several places through the state. There's few towers he will climb. The one at the courthouse, it's too dangerous for him to climb now. He won't climb it.
So this one out in a more uninhabited area would replace that one. So again, after our June 15th meeting, I'll have something more to report.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your report. We'll move on to Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
We met last Monday at 6:30 here in City Hall. Discussed two items. I'll go with the second item first. I had a complaint on the parking on the east side of the Green Building Supply. They redid the road there last year and raised the asphalt up, so there's no really stop place for the cars to hit on the sidewalk anymore like they used to have. So cars are pointing up onto the sidewalk and blocking a lot of the sidewalk off when they park there. We left the meeting that night, and I saw a van parked clear up about that far of the building. And so, we discussed that and came up with a solution of putting parking blocks along there. There's nine stalls, I believe, having the city install parking stop blocks.
Actually, the business...
Aaron Hershberg...
They're paying for them.
Did send an email, said he found some low-profile ones, and he would actually pay for and supply the blocks if the city would install them. So the county thought that was a good idea to go ahead and move forward and do that. And Mike will move forward with Darrell and get that taken care of.
Darrell is aware, and I'm aware, that he's willing to purchase those, and I think it's a win-win.
Okay. We also discussed Fair Fest again. We'd had two meetings on Fair Fest. The committee basically approved the same closing timeline and the same roads as the previous year. Fair Fest had requested all of Main Street down to Burlington be closed off for the whole duration. We thought that would be inconvenient to the area, plus hard for fire and police to get in if they were needed to get in. The one change we did agree to, and they wanted to make, is they want to move the second stage from the bandstand over to the old Tribune printing lot where the building collapsed, and also have the Beer Garden on that lot also. So that would be the changes that we thought were a good idea and good changes they suggested. Anything else you want to talk about?
Well, clarification. That will be a second stage?
Correct.
Okay.
That was a grandstand stage last year, right? The one on Square? You're moving?
Yes, that was on, in the gazebo.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. And did you discuss the Beer Garden hours?
No. Basically, the same as last year, what we approved at the meeting, I believe, wasn't it?
Well, we had asked for extended hours. I think that was in, that was in the packet that I gave you. We had asked for Friday night, Saturday night, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
That was the first meeting, yeah. Talked about that, yes. And we're closing at 10 on Sunday?
Yeah.
Basically, the same hours, maybe one hour longer on the first two nights?
Well, we were only open on Saturday last year. So, we were asking for extended hours because we're going to have that second stage right next to the Beer Garden. So we thought that would be advantageous for them.
That's appropriate to have that.
Okay.
And you had also asked at the first meeting, maybe if we couldn't close the street for some extra parking spaces blocked off along Broadway? But we didn't ever clarify that, what she wanted or what you were requesting.
Well, I think that we had talked about half of Broadway on the north side. But I think that we can keep it the same as we did last year.
That's better.
I think it's just simpler. And I think we also discussed maybe some help in helping car owners be aware that we're going to be closing the streets at a certain time. But I think we decided we would just maybe put some flyers out first couple of nights before we close the streets down, just to let them know.
Correct. Essentially, the committee approved the same thing as was last year, except for the Beer Garden in one stage being moved.
Okay. So, are you going to make a motion then to approve those closings and the Beer Garden hours?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve that package of street closings and approval for the Beer Garden?
Second.
Second by Ledger Callen. Any discussion? I assume you have Ross Walker's permission to be on that lot? Okay, very good. I'm looking at Richard. I know there's some history there. That's great. Good work. So, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Aye.
And we look forward to another great event. I know that, you know, a lot of progress is being made, a lot of really exciting things being talked about for the entertainment that's coming. So hopefully, it's another great success for everyone. Thanks so much. Okay. Next, Environmental Franchise Utilities Committee.
Let's see, we met last week. We didn't take any action, but we heard from Ideal Energy. They're educating the committee so that the committee can then educate the full council on various possibilities in terms of solar energy, solar power installations, direct purchase versus these power purchase agreements and their various kinds. So it's, there's a lot to learn, but Darren was asking excellent questions. And I think pretty soon, we'll have another meeting in May. And we'll be up to date on some of those options for, potentially for the library, potentially for the new gym. What makes best sense for the city. But we did agree that these are excellent investments that regardless of the solar power, what that means in terms of the green aspect, they're just, it saves the city money on utilities, and that's a win for the city. We heard from the gentleman who had come to the council proposing the divestment of the fossil fuels. And Darren and I, Darren graciously agreed to help them, I don't want to say tone down, but maybe tweak the wording of the resolution and be something more palatable that might actually get accepted by the council. So, that was very nice of Darren. So we're going to work with them on that one. Some people have approached me over the years about the leaf burning. And I took a look at the current days of burnings allowed. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday in the months of April, October, November. So, the idea is that if a person couldn't go outdoors during the burning season because of asthma or some other respiratory illness, that's three days straight that they wouldn't be able to go outside. And so, I was proposing removing Wednesday. So we'd have an every-other day, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Police Chief Thomas has no problem with it. Chief Vaughn had no problem with it, except for that he might forget what the burning days were. But we figure if we do the every-other, that maybe that'll stick in. What'd you call it? What's your brain called?
Just keep the lighter away from the...
All right. He's got a nickname for his brain. He's not going to tell us now, but...
No incendiary devices in City Hall.
All right. I didn't bring a lighter tonight. I ain't making me blush. All right, we're going to take action on that later. We'll take a vote on it. I actually got some really good data on that from, it was a DNR, some health regulatory, and it shows asthma rates and the increase in the months of October, November. So I think there's something... think there's something there. We talked about the Connolly Waste Recycling Center and Daryl Bysgard wants the public to know, we have plethora of, of nice compost, it's not the nicest compost, but it's decent compost and a lot of mulch at the city compost site at 20th and Jackson. We're kind of getting a little bit overwhelmed with it, we need to move it out because we're going to do the spring pickup, we're going to grind all that stuff up, so anybody who wants large amounts, they can be loaded for free, you just call the, the Public Works Department and make an appointment. So anybody has like large tracts of land, I know Sean Worley had a friend north or south of town, it took a lot, we need people with basically farmland who would take a lot of this so we can keep it moving. That's it.
Thank you, Michael. Property Committee.
Yes, property met last Thursday at noon because we had a request from an individual wanting to do some work on a piece of city property out at Walton Lake, and he wanted to, he wanted permission from the committee to do some clearing and it's primarily brush. I mean, he's not going to take down any large trees or do anything, but it really is kind of an eyesore because it's just sort of, as I say, undergrowth and that type of thing. So I guess at this point, we definitely felt that it would be advisable for him to go ahead and proceed, so the property committee at this time would like to recommend that, you know, council give approval for this individual to, I guess I would just say, clean up this portion adjacent to the lake.
Okay, thanks Martha, so that is a motion, do you, do you recall the gentleman's name or the lot?
Paget. Larry Paget.
Larry Paget, okay.
He works for Walton Lake and already, you know, works for the golf course or the club there, but if I'm, just.
Yeah, and I think at some point, certainly, I mean, depending down the road, I think he might consider coming to the city and asking if there's a possibility that he might, you know, use a building site, but that is not at the present time even in, under consideration.
Great.
He simply wanted to, you know, for the good of the lake and everything, kind of clean up some of the weeds and small, you know, tree, small brush, no trees.
Right, and this is all our property? This isn't owned by any?
Yeah. He's, and he's considering purchasing a part that juts it out into just the end of Walton Lake on the east, across from the gun club, and the frontage along that property is owned by the city. And so, as Martha said, he doesn't want to take down the trees, but he wants to clean up the shoreline so that it looks clean. We did have an issue, I know Scott brought up at the time, you know, you know, that we should be careful that, you know, we're not, you know, aggravating the problem with erosion there. And I don't know if Scott's done any more research on that, I haven't, but it didn't, on the face of it, seemed like it was going to be an issue to us. The main thing was he was going to take down the, you know, the dead, dead wood and, and kind of brush growing up inside those trees so that it would be, you know, something pleasing to look at for him and others as well.
And we felt at this time that, I think Scott agreed, that at least at the present time, what he anticipates doing would not have any effect in terms of, you know, erosion later and it would be an asset as far as the appearance of the area.
Okay, so a motion to approve permission to clear a portion of city land around Walton Lake?
Second.
Second by Hamis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Economic Development Committee.
I will have more to actually act on later, but I can give you a quick summary of what we discussed tonight. So we did talk about extending Lincoln Road, which is in the Highway One South TIF district, basically by Pilot Grove Bank, so we would extend that a little bit further for the commercial lot that's right next to Pilot Grove, so that can be developed as well as the potential housing development that's going to take place right out there. So the committee was in favor of going ahead with that construction this year and getting that done. TIF funds would be used for that, but we would probably have to do some short-term borrowing on that before that TIF money was collected because we have limited amount of money in that account right now. So that will be coming before council for full approval at some point here very soon because we do want to get those bids in quickly. Okay, and then we also discussed potential development, housing development off Libertyville Road, and that would be kind of a mixed development is what it's looking at like right now, and that land would be annexed into the city. So we're going to be looking at our tax abatement ordinance and Mike's going to be reviewing that, but the proposal was for a letter in support of this developer and so that'll come before council. We don't have that tonight for approval, right? You want it to go, I mean, we need to have that full council approval.
This is on the abatement of the city portion of the tax, Mayor?
Right.
And right now that ordinance prohibits any parcel not in city limits prior to 2012 from participating in that program. So in order to get the local match requirement up to speed, we would need to amend that ordinance and uphold that property once it's annexed into the city.
Right, so that'll be coming before you at some point, but quick summary.
Thank you. Thanks Jessica. I'd also mention Mike and I were at the FIDA monthly meeting at lunchtime and FIDA is also circulating an RFP for development of 10 acres, is it, Adam?
10 acres of 12th and Gear.
10 acres of 12th and Gear, so, you know, a, I think a innovative way to approach this, which is, you know, putting together a request for proposal that will go out to potential developers inside and outside of the community to invite interest in, in development, so really look forward to seeing what kind of results we get there as well.
One final note that I didn't mention, we will also be coming before you with an amendment to the TIF, South Main TIF, and it'll be expanding that here very shortly to include property that's just south of 227th and that whole DOT area, so that'll be, and then we'll be looking at potentially paving 227th in the future, so.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to administrative reports. First, I'll ask Derek if he'll give us a pool update, we're moving along, pool and gym.
Real quick, pool update, water features will be in this week. The pool decks are being poured, they're one-third done, and the zero depth area is two-thirds done. Gym update, the rec center entrance is demolished, the footings on the east side are poured and on the west side, soil's pretty damp there, so they're tearing it up, re-compacting, tearing it up to help it dry before they can start building on it. That's all I have.
Okay, great Derek.
May I just add one thing? We are aware of some mud issues in the parking lot with respect to our patrons gaining access to facility. We're working with the project manager and the contractors to speed up their cleanup process, but it is spring and it is a construction project, we ask the public just to bear with us, but we are aware that that is a concern and we're working to get it mitigated as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you Derek. Next, we have a project update, Mel.
Well, spring construction isn't in full swing, I only have two pages for you tonight. Um, the first page is mainly the sewer projects, which are moving along, but no major updates to provide you with. On the second page, the O.B. Nelson basketball court has started or will be starting very soon, they were out setting up stuff on Friday to do that earthwork. The grand opening is scheduled for June 6th and Derek already left. I believe we're coordinating that with the grand opening of the skate park, working with Spawn Ranch to get some more than amateur, less than professional skaters here, skateboarders, but it looks like that will be from 12 to 2 on June 6th for the skate expedition, but then hopefully do a dedication of the basketball court at that same time. The Highland Street Water Main, city crews are, started working on the water main and get that done so that the Shipley Contracting can work on the street construction here in a few weeks. There was a question, the water main job by Piltover Construction is moving along, it is not done yet, but we're getting closer. They're down to cleanup work, Washington did get seeded last week and I'm not 100% sure if Highway One got seeded, but it is prepped as well, they're finishing up the sidewalk work on Highway One. And other than that, I guess I'll just take any questions you have on projects, things that have been going on. Perfect.
Mel, all right, good. Mike has a comment or a question?
I was just going to ask you to speak a little bit toward our meetings on step one and the wastewater treatment plant with McClure.
Okay, with the finalization of Lila Williams' property, that McClure is able to start work on, I'll say more of the investigation design side of things for the equalization basins, those would include soil borings on her property. We did, or they did the soil borings on Terry Meyer's property, but the DNR requires so many borings per square foot, so we have to go back on to Lila's. Also, now that we have permission to be on that property, the state archaeologists as well as the DNR will be on site to make sure it's an appropriate site for an equalization basin, they have to check and make sure there's no wells or the houses are more than 1,000 feet away, so they're doing all of that checking. McClure is also doing survey work so that they can start on the design of the equalization basin. We are down to one easement on the conveyance system. We're looking at some options, I believe we've talked about this in closed session, but we've, we're looking into some options so that we can continue with the step one conveyance and not allow that one easement to hold us up. We should have an update for that in a couple weeks, but really, we're, I keep saying, we're so close to getting started on this project. I do show these two projects on the map of construction for this year, I guess I'm hopeful that the easement issue as well as the investigative work on the equalization site won't hold things up and that we can continue, that we can actually build something this summer.
Great, thanks Mel, appreciate it. Okay, so counsel, before, before we adjourn, we are going, we're going to adjourn our meeting officially and then continue, I've asked Terry Baker from the Convention of Visitors Bureau to give us a brief presentation and then follow up with a video that she has, is in the process of showing openly to the community in three different parts. Martha and I attended earlier last week the first part, and again, the video series is 20 Ingredients of an Outstanding Downtown. The overview of that first part was very inspiring to what some cities have done across the country for reenliving their downtown. Again, there's a lot of attention that's going to be on that. This next second section has to do with cities, municipalities, public policy surrounding those issues, so I thought it would be good if we could all see those. Terry is making them available tomorrow at 7:00 AM, noon and 5:00 PM if somebody would rather see it at that point in time, but we will be showing that after we adjourn.
We're watching the part two or?
We're watching part two.
Yeah.
So an entertaining motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hamis, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned.